This is all M M A stuff, but you go to Augusta.
Thank you.
I fixed this online, so it doesn't have that.
Oh, nice.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the brotherhood which stands one nation under God and is a liberty and justice for all.
I roll call Teresa.
Here.
Ricky.
Here.
Bill.
Here.
And Paul.
Here.
I got glasses to match yours as close as I could find, Rick, see?
I know, she's the one.
Yeah, but I'm twenty years old, you son.
It is, isn't it?
I know.
That's what I said to her. She getting rid of us already?
No.
You're the night op, you didn't want it.
Insurance proper?
Not coming.
Oh. You see that in an email?
Yeah, you just don't read.
I read them. I didn't see that. I saw it don't open something.
Yeah.
Well, that was a s- I clicked on it, but I did not open the thing. Are we okay? I'm not good with computers. I just happened to.
Oh, there is insurance.
I have that too. Not good.
You opened it?
Well, I previewed it. Did you hit the?
There's a thing that come came with it. I never touched that at a link or something like.
Did you open the link?
No.
Okay.
My son didn't return it.
Fire department. So Chief, how are you?
Okay.
Doing some good things out there, I saw.
We are. So I don't have the complete statistics. I wish that I could give you the complete statistics. This was a pretty crazy day, but I wanna say overall with the money that we raised in uh families as far as um Thanksgiving, trying to help families, uh I wanna say we have gotten twenty-three families that we um got a mailbox to um which was uh wonderful and most of that is due to the uh generosity of um Lebanon residents and donating and helping us out.
Did I give you the coffee?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so uh that was wonderful. I mean, it was awesome to see. We were out at uh Dollar General on Saturday. Uh right, helping to uh collect toys. That was uh very good. We had a, we had a very large uh toy donation. Um, so all of that was extremely good. Um, you know, we continue to be active in the community out there, uh making contact with people. Um, that's all gone extremely well. So my uh report here is uh kind of brief. Um, so I'll get into the uh budget last, although that's first on the list. Uh just real quick, the call activity, uh we had twelve calls over the last week, month to date forty-seven, seven hundred and fifty-four for the year. Uh we're down about that fifteen percent from last year, really hasn't changed a whole lot. Um, as far as uh apparatus, all the apparatus is currently in service. Uh Engine Five had a uh pump valve that was repaired and Engine Two had one repaired as well. They were both repaired today. Um, and the door on Engine Two is scheduled. Uh rubber truck, uh when they did the valve repairs today, they pulled the hinge. They've gotta measure that up. Um, they popped uh both of the um hydraulic pistons off. And they said it shouldn't be a uh tough repair. They've just got to size up the hinge and should be able to come back with the pistons and the hinge and uh reapply the door. So uh that shouldn't be a uh huge thing. Um personnel updates, uh uh the Hoffman family uh welcomed a baby boy the other day. So uh we're gonna lose Jen over the next few weeks um as uh she's at home. Uh and Tanner uh just successfully completed his advanced uh E M T and is all state licensed uh and registered to the state now. Um, and then kind of getting into the budget, uh just real quick. Uh the stats that I've got here, this was as of the budget report that I had yesterday at the forty-one point oh nine percent of the way through the cycle and forty-one point oh nine percent of the way through the total budget. Uh looking at the uh budget report for today, we're at forty-one point two-two percent of the way through the uh cycle. And we spent forty-one point two-two, which um we're seeing a trend over the last few weeks where we are breaking even every single uh every single week over the last uh what, four weeks or something where we're exactly uh on track. Um, I concern, I did have a conversation with Paul earlier. Um, you know, and I also had a conversation with Bill earlier. Um, as far as payroll, I mean, our target is ten-three-sixty-nine. Um, right now, we're averaging twelve-two over the last eight weeks. Now, that's slightly deceiving only from the standpoint that in the twelve-two, that number is slightly inflated from the standpoint that the ten-three-sixty-nine, that is station coverage only. That's what we need to be on target, um spending just the uh money out of lines uh five and seven. And the eight-week average includes some training hours and some uh P T O time and different things that come out of a different line item, although the, like the training, uh that uh line item right now, we're almost maxed out on, so there's no, there's really no room left in the budget for training. Um, as far as the the staff development and training, uh I've, I guess thirteen-hundred-and-sixty roughly for the rest of the uh budget cycle. So there's not a whole lot of room left there. Um, you know, we've talked about different ways that we can save, which I cut back on the call response, uh on the EMS side, the fire side of things, we still have an open response. Um, and you know, looking at trying to mix how we staff as far as, you know, if a paramedic's on, trying to partner them up with somebody that's a lot lower um uh in their uh rate of pay so that hopefully we can balance that number a little bit more. Uh, but the things that I can't control are, you know, some type of a big incident. I can't control when people cash in their P T O time. Uh, so there are definitely definitive factors in there that I can't control. Um, and anyway, I, you know, the only other thing that we can start doing uh to stay within budget if we, if we hit that point is cutting staff. And, and so, you know, I just, conversation, uh you know, if if we've gotta cut staff, I mean, right now, just using the the two numbers that I've given you, the ten-three-sixty-nine and and the the twelve-two-thirty, that's eighteen hundred dollars, you know, roughly a week difference. And, and right now, our eight-week average for what we're paying per hour at the station is twenty-five-eighty-four. So I mean, that's seventy-two hours a week um uh to to pull things into alignment. So I just, I wanna make everybody aware and have that conversation and I am certainly doing everything that I can to um maintain as low a payroll budget as possible. Um, but at some point down the road, we may have to look at, we're gonna, if we're gonna stay within payroll budget, we may have to look at cutting some hours, so.
What's the um the way, like, so you're at, so you ten-three, but if you need that third person on during the day?
I'm saying to 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 get to ten-three.
No, right now, you're at what, twelve?
Well, right now, we're running about twelve-two on on an eight-week average.
And that's with your third person?
And that's with the third person, correct.
And you need ten-three to get into budget, nineteen-hundred.
And and again, that that twelve-two is a little deceiving. I mean, that's an overall cost of what is being paid to the, to the department, but there's additional things in there that really, we don't have a line item for, like P T O time. I mean, we just had somebody cash in forty hours of P T O time for twelve-hundred dollars this week. So that's a a twelve-hundred-dollar, you know, budget hit that there's no, there's no line item for that. There's no budget for that, so.
Just off that, you need, you need another fifty thousand.
So I I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to stay ahead of the the curve here and keep everybody informed and so.
So if we use a number rounding out seventy-five if we need extra.
Yeah, we should look at it probably in a couple of weeks, when we're a little closer, and we can do something if we have to.
Before it's over.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, yeah.
We got to Christmas. We would be able to know, wouldn't we?
Uh, January first, we'll decide it'll be a six-month.
Mark.
Yeah. And see, we'll have more clarity then.
And, and obviously in that too, I've had quite a bit of overtime, okay? I I've been, I'm working as part of the third yeah, as the third, Monday through Friday. And I will tell you, you know, and I I'm not trying to pat myself on the back, that's not it, but there are hours that I'm not including as well, okay? And only from the standpoint that that it's, you know, little things or whatever that, you know, I mean, I, it it's just natural that those things happen, but I mean, I am doing everything I can to control those costs, so.
Yeah, like I said, we'll have some more clarity in a couple of weeks. Yeah. We can figure it out when we hit the halfway point and see what we can do to.
Plus, then you'll also have, did you get busy around Christmas out there normally?
It depends on, it ju- yeah, winter time, it depends on storms. I mean, if we have a bad storm, we could, we could have, I mean, last year, not, not this spring, but the previous spring, we had, um, we had two months, one month, we ran almost three times our normal call volume. I mean, we we ran like a hundred and seventy calls that month, I mean. Um, and and there's no way, but then this year, those storms didn't happen. And we maintained a very normal kind of call volume, so I I I can't predict those. That's a tough thing.
Right, but usually it's.
Yeah, yeah, usually, yeah.
And I also do this.
Yep, Fe- February and March are usually big ones. You get those last-minute storms, the real heavy snow, wash the trees down, wash the layers down, all that kind of stuff. So.
Yeah, it's just stuff that we have to look at, you know, especially as we um after the Thanksgiving and start looking at the budget workshops for us, that um, you know, what does contingency look like for emergency-type situations? Um, it's just unfortunate, you know, a couple of the items that's in his budget right now that's not accounted for. One is the um proving grounds work and then the uh other one is um E P L, which is on average is an additional sixteen. What's E P L? Earn-paid leave. Okay. So that earned paid leave comes out to almost sixteen thousand additional dollars that wasn't accounted for in last year's budget. We accounted for it. We did.
Yeah, last year's budget.
Yeah, last year's budget, we did. We added a certain percentage. I forget what it was. Because it was a state, the state, yeah.
Yeah, the E P L was the.
But didn't we cancel? Isn't that canceled?
The one, what, we were one percent?
Mandate or something like that. We, we canceled the um.
No, I think the state canceled it on, on the the E P L, earned paid leave. No.
We added money, we added money to the budget, kept taking that into effect. I mean, obviously, it's not.
I think it was one percent.
One percent was for the
Family medical.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah, 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 we had to take it into account.
Seven point six-five to eight, one-sixty-nine.
Okay, so that's what we added, all right. All right, well, like I said, another month or two, we'll have more clarity, but thank you for all your hard work and thank you for everything you're doing for the community. It's it's amazing. It really is, so. Yeah, it was great seeing them out there with uh Momentum Network has passed um for the toys. That was a real good, real good thing and. Raised a lot of money and a lot of money, a lot of toys came in.
And your car was stuffed full of toys.
No, it was all in my, it was like. Those were its personal toys. No, it was, now it's all in my enclosed trailer. But um, no, it was just nice, cause even for the, this food drive stuff, you know, uh groups like Accessible Transport, Momentum Network, um Fire Department, getting um, working through it, um a lot of the donations from the community has been a big, real big help for everybody, so it's a big thank you for everybody, yeah.
So we're still doing the Toys for Tots, so.
Toys for Lebanon Kids.
Toys for Lebanon Kids, okay, but that's still drop-mart at the station?
Yeah, that, yeah, we're a collection point, if anybody wants to, if anybody wants to drop toys off at the fire station, we're a collection point, so.
Those go to Lebanon Kids.
Yep.
All right, awesome. May I, you have anything else for Chief? Thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate it. Is it a public hearing, Mike?
No, I just said no.
Okay. Um, all right. Department head briefing, Zach?
Sure. Um, just a couple of things. I actually be somewhere at seven-thirty, so if you guys have other things to ask me, just do it when I'm done. Um, my office. I can't be in there currently for more than five minutes. It smells so bad. Uh, some, something died. And I believe the ceiling, um there's some stainage, which I thought was the roof leaking. Um, but I think it's where they have a nest, something, either mice, rats, squirrels.
Um, did you go up there and check it out, Rick?
Yes, I will.
No, did you?
No, I haven't yet, but I will.
You probably, are you around tomorrow?
Are you scared?
I'll go with you. I just am laughing at his joke. I'll go, I'll, I'll, I'll go with you. You can get on my shoulders, we can do it together.
I I I think what's gonna have to happen, and like I said, I was in there for like five minutes and I I started to feel ill. So it's, it's pretty bad. Um, I looked around. I didn't find anything obvious, but that, I've heard them scurrying in the ceiling. Uh, I came here the other day, reached, found um paperwork from a pest control that we've used before at the uh transfer station. Uh, I reached out to him. He said he'd be happy to do something, but he has a outstanding balance of six-hundred-and-forty dollars owed to him from the town from twenty-three, I believe. Um.
That budget's passed?
So he could be in there as early as next week, he said, but obviously he wants to get paid for what he apparently didn't get paid for.
Yeah, yeah.
What time you gonna be around tomorrow? We can at least look at it tomorrow and see what it is.
I don't know, call me in the morning.
Ten, eleven?
Yeah, early, ten-thirty.
Zach, let me talk to him again, find out what the date is on that.
I have the invoices.
Oh, do you?
Yeah.
You wanna leave him with us?
I can, there, I had him send it to me.
Oh, yeah, just email the allegedly.
I can send it there.
Yeah, just, just give it to us so we can.
Just wait.
Okay. Um, and again, he was, did that, I think what he did before with those, I think it was like a, it was a two-hundred-and-seventy-five-dollar initial setup fee. Um, and then it was, he does the, like, safe traps, uh, I think it was eighty dollars a month. So it may not be a bad thing to look back into and even at the transfer station to get it, because they're not doing it there anymore either.
Yeah.
Huh?
They're not doing it there.
For the rats?
Yeah, those, whatever he had there, well, he hasn't been paid for the other ones, so he's probably not still doing it. Um.
For two years now.
Yeah. So it'd be good to keep it at bay at the, my office, and then we obviously have a pretty big problem over there with rats too.
Yeah.
Eating the hot top and they eat everything, apparently.
Do you know?
They chew through the hot top, yeah.
That's crazy.
And if you go there at night, it's, if you're bored some night, go up there with a flashlight and you'll see them.
Lots of them.
A lot of them.
Swamp rats. They got flat tails. They eat them down south.
Some of them are the size of cats.
Yeah, those are the swamp rats.
Um.
Yeah, they're real big.
Yeah, I think it was two-seventy-five initial setup and then eighty dollars a month for them to maintain them.
Is it, is it on the budget line of the transfer station still?
No. The outside services.
Uh, whatever he did, whatever he did or would do, would be additional to remediate what's actually going on in there and try to take care of whatever rodents are in there.
Right.
The one thing he wouldn't do was remove the sheet rock, because we'll have to take a piece out of the ceiling. It's moldy and I think it's all just urine and animal feces that they have seeped through.
Okay.
Um.
Might be wise to have company do that.
Yeah, like I said, I was in there for like five minutes and I I didn't feel well.
Was it like Servpro or something like that? As opposed to you and me cutting, we'll look at it.
Find some holes maybe up in the, you see any holes up in the E?
I think they're accessing it from the back where the, like, the sign room is on the back. There's just like barn doors that exit out the back there and you can see daylight, so they can, they can get in there, but
Okay.
I had Lynn pick me up some traps and stuff for when I can actually go in there.
Borrow my gun?
I haven't seen them, so it's hard to say what it is.
Walk through night, you'll see.
Um.
What else?
The I did some work up on Center Road in the shoulder by the houses that have some water issues with the drainage soil. Um, it, it appears to me that the only option is that swale. Um, I had Jen print me off some stuff from that. There was more, but I I printed these two and I had to get out of there. Um, I don't know, this is from two thousand and three. I don't know if you guys had seen that. But it's, it's talking about the drainage easement. Um, I I believe we have one. And it's deeper, it would be probably deeper than it should be to leave just a swale. It talks about putting in an actual culvert. Um, but it's like a three-hundred-foot span. So that's a, that's a lot of, that's a big cost there. Um, probably adjust it a bit and have it, you know, daylighted for a ways. And then where it starts to get deeper, you know, at one point, I measured out and shot with the laser, it was like fifty-six inches down would be bottom of height, so you go down five feet and then you have to go back fifteen feet to to get your slope to a reasonable, you know, whatever it is, three-to-one pitch or slope. So that's, I I was gonna go back up there tomorrow morning and shoot a couple more spots down the shoulder of the road, because it looks, it kinda looks like it, it could, might travel down the shoulder, some driveway culverts were changed and lowered, but I I could be wrong. Um, so if if we don't figure something out with that, it's just gonna be, be a problem for the homeowners up through that stretch. Uh, J T Travis did some patchwork um on Shapley Road for a really rough and failed section um today. And when I was up there, there was, I walked by a culvert outside of that hatch and it has a eight-inch hole in it in the top, in the traveling. Um, I have a, there's a, there's a few of these. One on Mercer's Row that I wanted to address. Um, and my culvert budget is at one-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars. So I'm the one with a hole in it in the middle of the tree is definitely need to be addressed. Uh, I'm gonna kind of, I'm gonna have to before, we're gonna just kind of do a round check of few that look you know, suspect, because that'll create a bigger problem when they collapse. So I'll have to just figure out where I can pull money from to buy some more culverts or gonna have to be done. Um, I'm still waiting on some, Allstate paving was out on a section of town that I had told him to give me some, some numbers on. Uh, he's gonna put that together. I wanted to see what the, what the board's thought was on i- if, once I come up with a kind of a scope of work and a plan and something to put on the ballot, what would be the best course of action to fund it? Have we ever thought of has a town ever done a bond?
Sure we have.
What, what, what?
Those are the, you're gonna have to look at.
It was Godding Road, uh, Baker's Grant, Smith Road and Blanchard.
I'll see you hitting that.
It was that, it was that whole section, um a lot of that, those roads are going, they're almost going the opposite way, there's, there must be rocks like this in the subgrade and they're pushing up. And obviously sections that are going the other way too. Blanchard Road is almost non-existent on the hills. Um, and I, I kind of chose that section because it's the neighboring towns on Blanchard and Baker's Grant, it transitions to perfect new hot top. Depot Road's new, it would solidify that whole section. It would be, it would be done. Um, I I know the question's gonna arise, you know, why there and why not over here? We're at a point where we just have to pick a spot to start and.
Friends and family?
No, I, they don't have any over there. Little brother would be questioning. Um, so he's putting those numbers together and I gotta, I have to get someone in there just to give me a kind of a preliminary estimate on the groundwork too. The whole, I want, my idea was the whole package, you know, you hire a contractor to they'll grind the road, they replace, the contractor will replace the culverts, uh, haul in the gravel, do the ditching, do the whole scope of work there. And then the paving outfit that will come back in and ace it. And ideally, we have enough money to in the following year, however, however it works, to top those roads. So they last fifteen years. Maybe, maybe better if we keep up with them. Um.
So you're saying, you, I mean, what, what kind of ballpark are you thinking?
My estimate is probably three million to do that. That's a, that's a general estimate.
The, the only way would be a bond. I don't think it'll pass.
I don't either.
But
Try it.
I, I don't have a problem putting it on the ballot. If the people vote for it, they vote for it, but.
I have some.
I wouldn't be for it myself. Again, it's not my decision.
Well, we're just, what I currently have, we will never get out of this rubber.
All right.
It's a mile at a time, a mile and a half, we'll just be falling back behind. You know, my current budget doesn't even, won't even top a brigady road that was paved and should be topped. Amongst other roads, uh, Gully Oven, you know, when you eat next year, that should be top coated too.
So does top coating come out of paving, or is it its own line item?
I have one line item for paving and that's the three-hundred thousand.
I mean, I guess if you get a cost and come back and, and does anyone have a problem putting it on the ballot if? Or you have any input, Paul?
I was able to put it on the table for now, because we don't know what else we got right now coming this year.
Yeah.
But no, this one's worth considering.
As a bond.
Wait, quick question. How much does it cost a mile to hot top?
It varies, um Gully Oven was
Well, to put that top coat you were just talking about.
Uh, it's, it's less than the base coat, because it's, it's usually inch and a half. Inch and a half or two inches of top and then, you know, it compacts down to an inch and a half. Um, but it's a, you know, it's a finer grade hot top, so it will disperse the water, it won't seep into the, the base coats are coarser, so the the water can get into it and eventually it just starts to starts to break apart.
Make like a sealer you can put on them with like a gravel? I saw that at one of the conventions.
Center Road was chip sealed.
Is that what it's called?
Yep.
Um, that's cheaper, right?
It, it is. I, I don't personally feel it's ideal for our climate.
All right. I don't know much about it. I just know there's a method out there.
Yeah.
That I saw them pushing.
And it's you know, Center Road's cracking pretty good. And that's only a few years old.
It doesn't seem like that one's very thick.
It's a base coat and then they put a tar.
Oh, I mean, the base coat doesn't seem real thick.
Yeah.
And I don't. I don't know who did that, but I think some we don't use anymore.
I believe it's the same outfit.
Is it?
It's that far.
Allstate bought that far ago.
But that is an option, but I I don't. I don't think it's. For roads that are.
No, if you don't think.
Wild.
Yeah.
You know, the cut edges on the piles, that stuff starts breaking apart. And if you didn't put a, you know, a four inch base down. Then you still just have your. Regular basis should have another inch and a half or two inches of hot top on it.
What about in the future instead of completely ripping the base up, grinding the top of it?
If if we have, I mean, if we have roads that are. You we can do that too. Most of them are in too poor a condition or they need gravel. Groundwork below it, you know, either a box cut out, you know, take material out, bring back in good. I I don't see any that. Really have that option. Most of them appear to be a full grind. And that's what I just had him quote over there. So it would be the full grind, the price for that, the base coat and a top coat. And I'm sure shouldering he'll figure that into.
How many miles is that? Or mile or half mile?
The the piece that I had him. Estimate is about five and a half miles. And kind of the thought with the. I mean, we just need. Something more than what's in my maintenance budget. If that line that I have. For paving stays with like my general maintenance budget. When that's getting done, then we're 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 still picking off. Other areas, you know, short cul-de-sac roads or something that that budget will suffice.
What South Berwick did is they did a ten million dollar bond. For ten years. Then they did their infrastructure planning for ten years.
Ten million a year?
I think.
A huge increase.
I have a figure.
Huge increase.
I have a figure on.
The fire station in the school?
Well, eventually we're not gonna be able to get to the fire station at the school if we don't.
No, the fire station won't be able to get to you.
Yeah. I I don't quote me, but I I have a I have a figure on a. A bond for five million and. I I wanna say it was. I don't wanna say it because I don't wanna. Put false information, but I have a you can go on like this main municipal bond. Page and you can plug in figures.
Four hundred thou and you can do it two different ways, but it was like four hundred thousand for the. Six million dollar bond for thirty year.
I don't think they'll do one that long.
No, no, I'm saying that.
Yeah.
That that's the number on that, but.
The paving ones are are a shorter term because they're figured on the life of the.
Right.
Road too, so.
Need to replace it before you pay it off.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, well, I mean, if you want to get it together and stuff, we can definitely talk about it term budgeting, but.
What was the price you said for the five and a half miles?
I don't I don't know those numbers yet. I I took some numbers. I I took what we did on Gully Oven. And what he had per foot. And just. Simply the base coat there at twenty feet wide, which is Gully Oven. Most of these roads are about twenty one. If you just figured it at twenty feet, it was around almost a million. To base those roads. Just the hot top. That's not the grinding. That's.
Two fifty a mile.
Yeah.
Two hundred a mile.
So something for. Food for thought. I'm gonna have to pay someone to go in and figure. The groundwork over there. I have a contractor in mind if I can get him. Nail down just to give me a day and he'll. He'll put it. He'll put something together. Figure out costs on the. Color crossings, gravel. You know, estimate. Really.
Alright, what else?
I think that was it for now. Still working on my winter salt. I have to get. Online and set. Reset up the account that we have with Morton. We've we've bought from them before, but it's. There's something I have to do with that, so I could get online and do that. But that's a. As you as needed, so you can order it at any time. We have salt. That's not an issue. We have plenty in there to get started.
Good. Alright.
All I can think of right now.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Public participation.
Walton Carlton, perfectly citizen. Wanted to run an idea by the select board and see if you're interested in the idea. I've been thinking about ways to help offset some of the costs.
I'll tell you one way is slow down on the follower requests. That would offset some costs. Just to let you know, you're you're crippling our one person crew. But. Okay. That that would be a large savings. I'm just I'm just saying it.
What are you basing that on?
You're. I the number is massive. It's ma- a massive number.
Yeah, the staff of forty seven of them since around there.
So.
To now.
Yeah, I'm learning about the.
No, I understand, but you no. There's not. There's not, but what I'm saying is you're talking. You're you're talking about trying to help save money. I am. Yes.
And you're complaining that I'm submitting too many followers.
I'm noting that you are submitting too many because you.
Costing the town too much money.
It is costing the town money, yes.
It's costing money. It's costing time that the staff just doesn't have right now.
Think your. Comments right now are. Appropriate.
It's it's a concern.
A very large concern.
Think your comments are appropriate.
Well, you're entitled to your opinion and I respect it, but I I don't think you understand the scope of it.
Tell me to not submit any further?
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Are you making trying to make me feel bad?
Well, I think you should understand. The intent is so that you. Okay, so.
Hear your complaint.
Alright, you asked me a question.
I guess this is. I guess the role is reversed. I will hear your complaint.
Yeah, it's I don't think you understand the magnitude of. What is happening to her to our treasurer with the number and the depth of the follower requests. So that I that's I don't think you're doing it on purpose.
Ninety percent of them take. Just a couple of seconds to print out.
But you don't know that.
To print out. Yeah, I've used. I've used the accounting.
Alright, well, obviously we have a difference of opinion, but. Go ahead with your uh, with your presentation tonight.
Anything else you'd like to?
Nope, that was it.
Vent about? Anyone else?
Well, excuse me, but I I don't consider venting. It's a concern, but. The hours that the staff has available to them.
This is a public meeting.
Yes.
I'm here for public participation. To share an idea on at least to save taxpayer dollars.
Mm hmm.
Yep.
And I think that the. Complaint. You're sharing while I'm doing public participation is very inappropriate.
Okay, well, there was just an irony there. That's that I couldn't let go that you're talking about saving taxpayer money.
I know you love to joke around.
I do, yes.
Yes, you do.
Yes.
But are you really being funny?
I'm not being funny right now. I'm pointing out the fact. That you're here talking about saving taxpayer dollars. And. We have a very limited crew here. We we don't run a large staff. For. Dollar concerns and taxpayer concerns. And when there's. I don't know. Do you know how many follower requests you've done?
Yes.
How many? No, how many?
I keep them all.
Yeah, how many have you done? Would you say a hundred?
No.
Ninety, eighty?
No. I didn't come prepared to defend myself.
Alright, alright, well, let's we'll move on from that.
Thank you for putting me on the defensive.
Okay.
I have lots of ideas to share taxpayer.
Okay, so you you're more than welcome.
With you, Chuck.
I'm not giving you a hard time. You're more than welcome to share the ideas. No, I'm not. I simply pointed out the fact that there's so many follower requests and I didn't. Do it to upset you. I'm trying to have a conversation with you. Alright, and I then I apologize. Let's.
I doubt it. You think it's funny.
I'm not laughing. I.
Putting them on the spot.
I did not make fun of you at all. That is not. I did not make fun of you. I did not put you on the spot. I've simply made a comment about the follower requests. That's all.
Problem with follower requests?
No, but it's excessive number.
I think if there's a law.
There is, and you can do as many as you like.
Have to justify.
You do not. You you do not. You're correct. Everything is you. I'm explaining to you the strain that it's putting on our staff.
Interest?
Yes.
What I have to say?
I'd be glad to hear what you have to say if you want to sit. Alright, you're making assumptions of my opinion. Which is not fair. So if you'd like to sit down and. And share what you have, I'm more than happy to give you the time you want. I'm not. I don't not that person that sits with a timer or says your minutes are up or anything like that. I've never been that way. You're more than welcome to sit down and I did not mean to upset you. I meant to have a conversation.
Apology. For trying to make me feel bad.
I didn't try and make you feel bad. I wanted you to understand. It's I'm not trying to make you feel bad. If we can't have a conversation about things, just like me listening to you about saving taxpayer money.
Conversation on the hall about it, but doing it during a public meeting of the select will is inappropriate.
Alright, well, I don't believe it is because it's town business and we are. Getting inundated with the follower requests that our treasurer is trying to keep up with. That's the that's the bottom line. It's not.
You are unable to support follower requests?
No, not in general than a.
Do you? Do this to everyone who asks?
No one's.
Submit to follower requests. Why are you doing it to me?
No one's ever submitted this many in my. Tenure. I I've never seen this many. Have you, Paul? And Paul's been here a long time. It's not to make you feel bad. It's a conversation to make you understand the strain.
Outside of the select.
We've been talking about hiring someone just to do follower requests because we've had such a large amount of them. And it's such a hard strain on Leslie. We started talking about in budgeting. Hiring an extra person just to do follower requests because it is such a large amount.
So and again, it's not trying to make you feel bad in any way, and I'm not picking on you.
What I'm asking is. Printouts from Trio. Click, 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 like send.
Okay. Alright, well, let's move on to this. Alright. You have Pat. You have handouts for all of us?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
So as a result. Of all these follower requests. I've learned a lot about budget.
Yes.
And I have an idea. And again, this is, I think this is appropriate for a select board meeting. So. I have the idea to. Create. If you're open to this. Can you pass these along? To create a permanent fund. That would allow. For. Principle that is donated. By private citizens or. Through appropriations from the town. To um. Be able to be used, built up, saved, not spent. Where it would earn interest and that interest would be. Used to help pay for certain um. Things that are allowable to be able to be purchased through a permanent fund, which include. Fire and rescue equipment. So I know that the fifteen thousand a year. That the fire department needs to support their turnout year requirement and funding. Could ultimately be. Um, used through this. And so through donations, appropriations from the town into a fund like this, if you agree. That it could be created. As a um, permanent fund and of course, the select board might be the trustees. And purchasing recommendations might come from. The fire department chief. And that by building up that money. Over time. And having a really good funding campaign. You can. You know, build it up so that it's taking care of that fifteen thousand dollar. A year requirement and taking that financial burden off the taxpayers. So that's one idea. The same could apply if you create an account for the SCBA equipment, which is much more expensive. And also I noticed in. One of my horrible follower requests. So this is what I got from my request for help from Trio. I can see. That there is um. Through the cemeteries. Cemetery funds that there are um, maintenance costs for the cemetery. And so I don't. I don't see the breakdown exactly what the costs are that the town is incurring and the taxpayers are incurring. But creating a similar fund, which is allowable, you can see that. Could. Through donations and town appropriations. Earn enough interest to be able to take some of that burden off of taxpayers. So I hope you like the idea.
It would take.
Submit it.
So. Basically, if we got four percent back. On fifty thousand in a municipal bond. We had if we had fifty thousand in the bank with this idea. Um, if we had fifty thousand, we'd get two thousand a year. Over ten years, but it would. Compound each year. So we would need to raise. Like three hundred and fifty thousand to get to fifteen thousand, which would be difficult, but if we could do it.
It's doable.
Yeah.
You can't do anything with the cemetery money though, right? We look.
She's talking about the over and above.
Over and above, because I know with the other stuff with.
But that's only on two two cemetery.
So it's a way to take some of the burden off of taxpayers and um, some of the strain of budgets.
The problem would be the initial investment would put. If we didn't, if it came from the taxpayers, like through taxes.
She's saying donations though.
Well, yeah, but the donations won't put a strain. Yeah, no, I I understand that. Yeah. Yeah, donations would be would be great. Yeah. Alright.
So and um. I also um. Wondered, so when you charge money to a CIP account or a special reserve account? How do you know? How that was, how that account was approved? How do you know the language?
Yes, Paul.
Paul, how do you know? Where where do you do that document?
The CIPs that we currently have were never. Formally developed. It's a. CIP format that's in place for most places. We do not have. Mine's a more general and basically it's based on the referendum itself.
So whatever the referendum question is, is. I will use it. Yep.
Okay, so the only way to get a description is to have a copy of the referendum, right?
Correct.
So that's what you need to know. Make sure you're charging things to the.
Spending appropriately.
Correct.
Yes.
And which is left up to the discretion of the select.
Do you have copies of those? So you know? The copies of the referendums?
They're available to us when we need them, yes.
They're in all the town books.
Okay.
Plus there's a master in the. Plus there's a master in the city.
In all the town books, so I will, so I asked if there is a copy because I'm curious if you're gonna create some permanent accounts, do they align with how the accounts for the CIPs were opened? And I was told that it would take a full-time person total of one month working time to go through all of the audits going back over a hundred years. And the, my cost would be a prepayment of three thousand dollars and I would have to take ten cents a page. And they're sitting right there in the books.
Well, some of them are, the last
So I will show you.
A hundred years?
Yeah.
Hundred years old.
Ask Christine. Christine said she'd have to go back a hundred years. That's why it was so hard. And she'd have to go through the old, old books.
Yeah, that's what, that's what the person doing it came up with.
You don't have, you don't have the old ones.
Yeah, they're in the safe, so they need to be gone through. Each, each vote, each referendum, yeah. And that's what, that's what Christine, who's been doing this a long time, said it would take to do. So that's how we base, that's how you base that, right?
Some of them in the books here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Actually, we have all the books in the vault.
No, these are the town.
Those are the ones for you guys to look at.
Right, that everyone gets every year.
Yeah.
But those are just, just a sampling of what actually.
And the year before's results.
It's, the other questions are in all those book, just different, yeah.
She'd have to go back to the vault and be mobile.
Yep.
Copy them.
But those, those are not active CIPs. Active CIPs are the ones that we deal with on a daily basis, which is different.
Okay, so the, on my list is the Salmon Falls Watershed, the Buildings and Grind, these are all active. The Highway Fund, Leaping Fund, that's active. These are all active funds, so yeah.
Just can you modify your request so it's only back twenty years? So we don't have to go back to a hundred years?
And I do have a copy of this FOLO that you were referencing to, and you had circled twenty-six things out of thirty-one total in the report you had submitted. And then you also said, plus others not circled. So that's a lot.
So I submitted something else and I said, here's a shortlist of the accounts and it's just so, it's one twenty. And they're all active. So they should be in those books.
And a lot of them though that you had circled were like ones that were like we had gotten grants.
Please.
See what she has.
I don't want to put people through anything.
And that's why I was pointing out to you. It wasn't to embarrass you. I didn't think you realized the scope of what was causing. So just.
No, I'm quite reasonable.
Yeah, no.
I sent back the shortlist, short, shortlist of active CIPs.
This, this would not be happening. This list here is what I'm just seeing.
Thank you.
It's, it's worrying sometimes that if you don't have any mandates type things, it opens it up to such a large, large area. Clarification, it's all we need. So this one, this is, this is.
Response to this was it would still cost three thousand dollars in advance and take one month full-time person. So now you know why I'm asking. I just want to make sure that if the permanent funds for the same thing are being created, I thought it would be helpful for you to know what the wording should be so that they're similar.
Can I take this?
Yes, please, yeah.
Let me, let me make a little. Can we put a hold on the other one where that is so inclusive?
Yeah, my response was, oh, okay, never mind. Yeah, no. I don't, I don't want that whole list and so are you open to the idea of creating permanent farms?
Rick?
As long as it's a donation fund, but if you're gonna put it on the ballot to try to get three hundred and fifty thousand out of people to put it in, I think we already got a general account.
It might take six years to get that much money. It might take ten years, but if you.
No, what I'm saying, what Chuck.
Select board.
So what I was, what Chuck was saying is three hundred and fifty thousand and you're only gonna get fifteen thousand.
Can I get one more copy? We have to keep one for the minutes.
So you'd have to put that on the ballot. If you had donations at three hundred and fifty thousand.
So what happens if, I will say I, what happens if I get three donations of a hundred thousand dollars each?
Then that's what I mean. The donation part is fine, but if we're gonna put it on the ballot, I'm, I'm not for that.
You put it on the ballot just to get the approval?
No. Okay, on the ba, yeah, yeah, you have to have approval.
Establish.
You have to have approval for anything that comes in as a donation.
I'd be okay, I, I would be okay with putting it on the ballot if it was based on a donation account in the town.
You need to draft a document that states how it's to be used so that, so that the intention's correct.
But it will all step up on right here.
It would have to go to. Plus I also want to do my own research to see how I know about it because just hearing about it, I don't have it in.
Yeah, well, it's similar to the CHAP fund. The same basic principle.
That's what I'm saying.
CHAP fund is very spelled out what it can be used and how it's used.
Yeah, for jackings too.
That's, I knew it was known, I couldn't think of what it was called. Yeah, you're right.
But so many people. This would be one people would add to individually as individuals as opposed to someone creating the fund.
Right, then you have to have a board of trustees.
Yeah.
Which is the select board.
Could be or might not be. The only problem with the select board is it's constantly changing.
Yeah, you're better off to have not the select.
So that, that's a concern.
Yeah.
Because we run, because we run into that.
You can establish a board of trustees.
Or a mixture thereof.
Yes.
Atkins is.
I have done my homework on.
Nursing firm runs that. Right.
All right, so let us think about that one. So Teresa and everybody that have, have time to do some research. And what's this, the?
It's just some information from main state law and MMA. So I submitted a request to be on the agenda just to propose maybe a different way of approaching some planning for roads. And it's good to hear the road commissioner is thinking ahead. One note in there is that it mentions the road commissioner doing road inspections every few months and looking for areas where trees may be cut back, so he can do budgeting based on actual needs of problem areas for trees or other safety issues, so. I'm just advocating for some long-term planning. Sounds like Zach is looking into getting some estimates and doing some contracting. So that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Robin. Thank you.
Thank you.
You too.
Individual selectman issues. Rick? Yeah, actually, let me, you gotta go, right?
Yeah.
Let me just ask you two quick questions on the unfinished business, the bridges, Lord Road. Any update on those? Okay, and then the Blaisdell Corner Clean Culvert Ditches, that's all done, so that can come off? And then Upper Guinea, the guardrail, still working on that? Okay.
Yeah. Still trying to log down. That number I gave you. I did.
That's it. No, he's still working on that. And the monument, you got, you're not, who's handling that?
Me again?
It went back to him.
The insurance company wants to know who fixed it and then they'll verify the book over the claim.
Maybe we just get a quote and send it to the insurance company, the quote. Get a quote and send it to the insurance company to make sure they're gonna approve it.
Call Norway Plains. Talk to Jen. See if Norway Plains, Cibago, they can all handle that. They're in here on the planning board every week. Or whenever they're meeting, they can probably handle that up. Maybe get that done for us. Yeah.
Any word on the telephone poles?
I haven't heard back from CMP. They, they did fix one on Gulliavon that I was adamant on that was leaning. So I just have to keep reaching out to them, I guess, and.
All right, and the compressor, you need?
I don't have that.
Okay, so will you take that off too?
Yes.
All right, and then I talked to Pete. He's getting a new glass container up there, so that can come off as well. All right, thank you.
All right.
Perfect. Have a good night.
Zach, you have to leave your meeting.
Oh, Zach.
You have to leave your meeting. I don't want to hold you up to do.
No.
Sure. You wanna have that announcement?
Yeah.
Okay.
With my selectman issues, he can leave and I do mine real quick, the one you called me Saturday. The pictures of that. Should that be an executive session or?
Uh, I wouldn't.
Tires.
I wouldn't say any names.
Just I have the pictures of the tires that were over on.
Yeah, that's fine. I, we don't even need.
And then the one that the transfer station was the same.
Yeah, okay, yeah. No, that was just a conversation. That wasn't anything it needs to be. So.
I thought it was a complaint.
No, not a complaint. A question. And I already answered the question with what you told me.
Oh, that's not bad.
Yeah, it wasn't in writing. So you made the motion?
Move that the board move to executive session pursuant to one MRS A four oh five six eight to discuss a personnel matter.
Second.
Second.
On favor?
Be back in ten minutes.
We'll be back, yeah.
Do you want to move that?
Do you wanna move that?
Um. For that out there, it's just the dumping, so I'm gonna get with Rod on that.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, I did get ahold of the um.
Designer.
Designer. He has nothing to do with dry wells or whatnot. Um, it's just, we want it, just do it. And I'll get with Rod. He says you don't even need to dry well, you can dump it straight out, but that's gonna be based on codes. So I'll get with Rod on that.
All you gotta do is basically.
Send it to the ditch out back. You can't send it to the ditch, you can dump it in the front.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna, it's gonna have to go right out here and then we're gonna have to try to do it.
Yeah, if anything, we just gotta take a look at the water softener itself and make sure that it's like an on-demand type of water, water softener, not running constantly.
Right.
And uh, go from there. So I'll get with Rod on that stuff and go from there.
Okay. So where the water softener caused that problem for the water heater, if we have some of the money left over, we can't put it towards the HVAC to replace it because the water softener caused it.
No, cuz it was.
Good try. Yeah. You're playing well with words, brother.
Well, I mean, that's, that's, that's really why we're trying to fix it is.
You're a defense lawyer or a defense lawyer?
Huh?
Are you a defense lawyer or prosecutor?
I'm not saying anything right now.
You're a defense lawyer, a hundred percent conviction.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Preventive on that than.
Right.
Well, and the furnace we get, we should make sure. Doesn't, if there are ones that aren't affected as much by a water softener with different construction or whatever. Because this one, the way it's set up, they said the wa- the salt just.
Eat it. Yeah, it corrodes it bad. And then I gotta be careful at my house, so I got the same thing in me. The problem is they have to, you have to maintain them. I don't even think we have anybody on a cycle, do we?
Yeah, we do it.
Usually.
We do it or we have somebody on a cycle?
Somebody from yearly.
Lynn does it.
Yeah.
She's got overalls that day.
No, the luggage contract, right?
There was, yeah. I, I, most people don't wanna touch it.
What, cuz it's so old?
That and like a lot of places, like we don't do, we don't deal in Lebanon with the wadi situations you guys have. I've heard about that quite a bit.
Yeah, no, I, I know the guys that do a lot of them. It's the problem that they have.
All right, Paul?
Wait, can I say one thing?
Sure.
Can we figure out when we wanna do meetup with the school board?
Yeah, that's, I'm gonna bring that up.
Oh, okay, nevermind.
Yes, this is um, well pack. There is a woman that does GA that has created this program to do, to do GA much cleaner. It's a whole program and she does charge for it. Um, and I would like to move to it if we could, if we could put it into the budget.
How much is it?
I'm trying to see.
Seven fifty for the program, isn't it?
Yep, seven hundred and fifty. From the town usage, it costs, yeah, fifteen hundred dollars to start.
So is it seven fifty a year after the initial fifteen, or is it just the initial fifteen and then the following year would be seven fifty?
Software is fifteen hundred, which the county would pay within the seven fifties for the town usage. York County will provide at least one dedicated member. They, they're going to this and then they're hoping in a couple of years, I won't have to do it.
Yeah, I was gonna say that they could just go through that, yeah.
Mm-hmm. That's what we're looking at. I don't, it might not take a couple of years, it might be a lot quicker, but that's what they're saying.
I have no problem with that, I think it's a good idea.
Add it to the issues budget, it's coming, yes, budget.
Well, can we just add it into the actual general assistance budget?
Yeah.
And since we don't really use it anyways, we would just add a line item in, can we just subtract from that nine thousand five hundred?
You can take it from it anyway.
Yeah, I mean, fifteen hundred isn't that bad to do. Put it in there.
Right.
Cuz, cuz you're still gonna have to support any calls or whatever comes in. This, this is just to help her with her.
Right.
Paperwork and everything.
Which is, it's a nightmare, so.
Okay, so wait, so like you said, eventually they hope to just, they would just call that number or whatever and they would completely talk to them and not talk to you?
For York County, I think that's what they're trying to get to, but that's not what it.
So does that mean this person's gonna be able to approve them without ever talking to like you?
At some point, maybe.
Yeah, but they all have to seem, follow the same laws, so it doesn't really matter who's doing it.
Okay.
Yeah, we all have to, it's all.
Cuz I just wouldn't feel, I don't know, I just kinda have a bad feeling about someone running another account that isn't us.
Yeah.
Even if they pre-screen it, it'd take a lot off of her.
Yeah.
Because right now, you have to do twenty-four hours a day, week coverage, which one person can do. If they, they could handle that part and say, okay, this is, this is your case.
Right.
Okay, so that makes sense. They wouldn't approve the money even if they were to eventually go to that process.
No, I, I do think that they're trying to get to that to ha- because this is through York County, this is only York County. And that would be, they would caught, they would pay somebody like a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to do this for all of the York County people that are doing it, which.
No, you can't go.
No, I don't, I do not wanna do GA for the entire county, I can tell you that much.
All right, yeah. Everyone, everyone agree with that? Yeah, right?
Okay.
I think it's good.
Worthwhile.
Definitely.
That's it for me.
All right.
Well.
School board? I saw you sent an email to them about that.
Yes, and then it got canceled, so they wanted to know some dates, but she's gonna send over some paperwork, I think, if you asked for it.
Yeah, yeah, and he, and that was me talking to Nancy Sewell. And Nancy said that Lebanon board members could be there and it wouldn't be a quorum. Okay. Um, she said she'd love to be there. And she was gonna ask Jerry and.
Jerry, Jerry's girl.
No, Jerry.
Justin.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
Justin, isn't it?
Justin, yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's right. That's what I was gonna say, Jerry and Melissa.
Melissa, that's it, yeah, that's the one, Melissa Seer, I couldn't think of her first. Um, so yeah, I, Mondays are good with everybody, right? Monday night?
Monday works for me.
Monday works for everybody?
Yeah.
Only it's not the twenty-second.
Okay. Twenty seconds, no, Bill?
No, twenty.
No, cuz I'm probably gonna end up having to work, cuz it's the week of Christmas.
All right.
So I'll call them.
What is? What's his name, Colin?
Oh, we do it after, for, after the.
We'll have to do it around now. Unless we clean up ourselves.
Just okay, Nancy, you saw her.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Is December fifteenth good for everybody?
I have to get the check with, um, the janitor's going on vacation and I don't remember his dates in the eight. Do you remember the date?
Well, I won't say it was the sixteenth, actually.
Yeah.
That the Christmas week vacation?
I can't remember.
It would be the week after, wouldn't it?
Well, he's gone, he's, he's, he's got something else to, uh, yeah, I don't know if it's vacation, it's some, he's got something, so.
Yeah.
I'll reach out to him.
Oh, can you put on the sixteenth on our agenda, the sexual harassment video?
You said the fifteen?
I can do, yeah, that works, or any Monday was fine for me.
Oh, can you put on the agenda, we're gonna start a half an hour early so we can do the sexual harassment group video together?
That's next week?
The, no, the sixteenth of December.
Okay.
You, you got the time to come in early, right?
I should be able to.
Okay. It's in my agenda book. She can't get out of it.
I can't fulfill, fulfill your role when you're here for that one.
That it for that?
It's only a three-hour video.
Yeah, no, something, yeah, I've seen a hundred of them. Um, all right, and then I just, I just got like a community thing. So Noble Wrestling, the youth wrestling for here in Lebanon, which they, uh, Nick Perro has done a great job with there at the old Grange Building. They have signups, I think this, the date went by, the original date, but they're always taking people and nobody will be turned away. It's a great program to get your kids involved with. Um, they'll help you with finances and things like that. Um, Noble High School's kicking off their wrestling and they have a girls' team with a new coach this year, Kaylee Boucher, who two-time state champ with over a hundred wins and they believe she's the first female wrestling coach in the state of Maine. Last year they were state champs and New England champs. And there's gonna be some coed tournaments and things like that, so, um, it's a good night out over at the high school, maybe support the girls' wrestling. And the boys are kicking off their season soon as well. And this year we have a chance to have our first time ever four-time state champion in Brady Allett. Josh Cody would have probably done it if it wasn't for COVID, but uh, it'd be cool to see Brady do that, so. Uh, it's a great sport and it's good for the community. That's all I got. Review in minutes.
Wait, so we're still on the next Saturday at eleven, right?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure.
What are we doing?
Workshops.
Yep.
What budgets are we gonna pull?
What time on Sunday do you want the budget for meeting? You guys are gonna do a workshop on Sunday, I mean Saturday?
Yeah.
Eleven, okay. That's what she, I just wanted to make sure that was the right one, cuz I wanted to post it. Do you want the minutes?
Oh, yeah, and we have that housing thing on the third, too. Forgot about that.
Oh, one other quick thing before we do this, um, the town properties being put uh, on the market, we're still, do we need to do anything special about to start moving forward with that?
I think I saw a local council, I didn't know about it.
Okay, um.
Local, legal person. Somebody's in Sanford, Rochester area, well, probably being, but Sanford area versus trying to go back and pull the poem.
I think Ed Tickham is in Sanford. He does real estate, too.
Well, I, I wanna make a suggestion that we use Jeremy Bradshaw as a Realtor.
Realtor, I'm probably, but.
Yeah, no, no, I, yeah, but the reason being when the towns needed help with evaluations and things like that, Jeremy's always stepped up and done it at no charge for us. Um, so I think several times he's done that and he's always willing to, to help, so. He sent a proposal over, I haven't looked at it yet, to start the process. And I think we should do it sooner than later, we need to get a legal, not our lawyers, though?
He's gonna be difficult.
Okay.
You need a real estate lawyer.
It's somebody close by, it'd just be so much easier.
Okay, so, um, you care? You care if I start looking into that? And does anyone have a problem using Jeremy to do the sales?
Not much, let's see his proposals.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to see what his proposals are and if he's gonna, if there's any deals on stuff.
Yeah. Cuz there might be some other people in town that might be interested. No, and my point with Jeremy is there are other people in town, but nobody stepped up to do the, do, no, do evaluations and do things when we need a Realtor to tell us something. You know, he stepped up when there's been nothing in it for him, so. We needed some market value on a property and a couple of situations, I don't remember them all, but I think the fire station was one of them. Proposed fire station lot, things like that, so. Um.
Different ones, working February, that's, this is where, this is a town. So it was already established for them, but again, be anybody, just, just these ones that we've dealt with in the past.
Okay. All right. Um.
They might not be interested, so, I don't know. Sanford, Sanford's doing a lot of these, so I don't know who they're using for an attorney, whoever they're using is probably our versing it, it should make it so much easier.
I'll, uh.
I can ask, but I, I can't vote it because he is our attorney, he's our company attorney, but I can ask my son if he's, does do it, if he's done it for Sanford. He's always in contact with him.
I said, I didn't see if he's been doing all these. All right.
I make a motion to accept the minutes as written from Tuesday, November eighteenth.
Seconded.
All in favor? Want you all, all right, wow. Request for more vacation time. Here's a uh, complaint. Pass this around for everybody to look at.
Just not here, you get to go on vacation?
My husband told me that town, I can't believe it.
Where you going? Up north Maine?
Florida.
Not Jackman, huh?
No, I can't believe it.
Why would you go to Florida instead of Jackman?
That's his favorite place on Earth.
Um. Here's a, another complaint. Request for training for codes in Lewiston. No accommodations. Just the cost of the class.
And then he won't be here for walk-ins that day, cuz it's always on a Thursday.
So this is from um Three Rivers Land Trust out of Alfred, Maine. I'm just gonna read it. Uh, dear town of Lebanon, enclosed, please find a payment in lieu of taxes from Three Rivers Land Trust. We are proud to con- have conserved forty-three acres of land in Lebanon, including fifteen acre Salmon Falls Preserve on Prospect Hill Road and twenty-eight acres at the Sanford Community Forest off Fall Road. These properties are open to public for outdoor recreation and hunting is permitted at the community forest. Salmon Falls River offers a stroll through the woods and beautiful views of the Salmon Falls River. We are deeply appreciative of the town services to support the well-being of residents and visitors who enjoy these conserved lands. Um, and I know the one, the fifteen acres along Salmon Falls Preserve, I know it's, that is a beautiful walk. Maybe we should send this over to the conservation committee, see if there's anything.
He wants to have that.
Oh, he is?
Yeah. Do you want me to, I got that, um, thank you, brother, what he's done before?
Any executive sessions, honey?
No.
Nope. Anybody have any executive sessions? No. Anybody got anything else? Threes?
No.
No? Motion.
Wait, can I?
Yeah, I figured.
Yes.
Oh, executive session, all right. We're gonna make any decisions now, right?
No.
Okay.
Can I make a motion that we go into executive session per one MSR, MRSA four oh five six A personnel?
Seconded. All in favor? All right. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you, everybody have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks, you too, thank you for the Christmas card.
Oh, you're welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.